John, you deliver a call for me to order if it's not really a meeting. John, you deliver an indication please.
Lord, please help God us to make the right decisions in Jasper and our citizenship. Do with our firefighters, our policemen, our EMS, our city workers. Nothing more safer than what in your name we pray.
We have before you tonight a rough draft of the agenda for Monday night. Under old business, we're going to be talking about Burton Street barn repairs and fire department roof. Have with us Assistant Chief Von Hedrick. If you would, Von, can you sit right here? Did I pick that? That's what I picked up. Excuse me, Councilor, I thought this, and this is not what I looked at earlier.
I did.
If you will recess, we do have a prayer all the way.
No problem.
I don't even like to look through the agendas. Someone does this. Okay. With that, we'd like to recognize Piedmont Hospital, Item A on your list. We have with us Mary Gorley and Norman Childers. Would like to talk to you a little bit about their plans for the hospital. Glad to have you with us this evening. They came by yesterday and started presenting these plans. And we came up with more ways to redesign the hospital property than you can imagine.
I bet the architects love you.
With that, I sent them back to come to you tonight. And actually, it might be before you Monday night at the council meeting. Norman?
Okay. Well, we, what I have in front of you is some drawings. Let me give you one of these. That's my original. Yeah. What was happened was we was approached by an air ambulance crew here in Jasper to see if they could station their helicopter at the hospital. And basically, that would be their base. They would be based out of the hospital. They'd fly out of the hospital, come back to the hospital, and it would be sitting on the helipad right there just outside the emergency room, which is the red cross down there at the bottom. This was something that, the original hopes was we would have a place already for them to sleep in or have a facility for them to be able to come in and basically take a residence at the hospital. When they found out we couldn't accommodate that, they said, well, we would be willing to move in a mobile unit onto the hospital property to be based out of there. It would be a temporary solution until we could come up with a better solution, but it would be a solution nonetheless that would require pulling in a double-wide trailer into the city limits. Option one is where they really wanted to be because the pilots like to be able to have visual contact with the helicopter while sitting on the pad. You know, it's a large asset and they won't be able to watch it all the time. Option two was one that we talked to with Johnny about putting it over the back of the property. And we would have to get it utility-ready. Actually, both of them are going to have to be utility-ready. We don't have utilities at either spot.
You went back and did this research?
Yeah, I did. I mean, they're accessible in the parking lot. I mean, we can get there. I did talk to a contractor today about, you know, temporary. I have to have a ditch across to the sewer line, which is about a 75-foot ditch. Anyway, when it was all said and done, it was going to be many thousand dollars on it. Probably more than 15,000 to get this location utility-ready. It would probably be maybe the same or maybe a little cheaper on the backside. That being said, I know there's no double wides that's supposed to be brought into the city limits. See, some of y'all, go ahead and looking at page two. It's just a bigger blow-up of the actual area looking at the helipad. And on page three, there's a red and blue square. The red one was the one they first approached. It was 60 feet long. They come back today and said they could actually go with a 48-foot, which is the blue square. But again, it would actually sit in a parking lot right there on the main road. So it'd be visible, but again, that's the best place for the ambulance crew to sit and watch their helicopter and be available. There's also a short track, probably 150-foot from the mobile unit to the helicopter to actually get ready to take off.
Council, this is their campus. And yes, we have ordinance specifically saying no mobile homes in the city of Jasper. And there's some issues about the constitutionality of that if we ever were questioned by an organization who liked mobile homes. But we feel, and the way that we would actually defeat your mobile home industry is with your slope of your rules per other cities, other counties who have qualified. We may need to address this in the future if we want to continue our present position. What we like for companies and businesses that spend millions of dollars on land and buildings not to mess up their environment, their aesthetics with mobile homes. Their situation here is, after speaking with them yesterday, is that their need for this pad to function properly supersedes their need for aesthetics presently. And of course, one day, you'll see this whole property probably won't even look anywhere near what it looks today. So I asked them to ask for a temporary permit versus a permanent, which we allowed, we have a precedent. We allowed LCI a few years ago when they built up offices in to bring in.
How long do we give a contractor to have a construction trailer?
It depends on how long they're going to do construction. But this, they don't want, that's not what we're looking at here. We needed something different than a construction trailer. This could be here five years. Maybe longer, maybe less. But it depends on what Piedmont wants to do with their future expansion. What they're giving up, and we talked about, is parking, which is a commodity at the hospital. You see, it looks like they have plenty. And this must've been a late evening shot. But more often, if you go over there today, it's very difficult to find parking accommodations. But, and that's what I told Norman and Ms. Gorley, is that that was the most important thing they were giving this up. But what we're looking at also is property owners around this mobile unit. We've got the Piedmont Village being planned. And I'm kind of concerned about what this would do to their plans to spend millions of dollars across the road from a mobile home, a mobile unit, which is, obviously, everybody's going to know it's temporary, it's set in the middle of a parking lot. So now explain the value of this to the hospital.
Well, from a value base to the hospital, I talked to the helicopter pilots. They're guessing it's going to cut 15 minutes off of their transport time from cranking the helicopter up to airport, bringing it over to the helipad, and then having to land, which is, as he says, the takeoff and landing is also part of the danger of driving or flying a helicopter. So you take one leg of that danger out if they can actually leave it here. It's going to be an asset to the community to have that helicopter sitting here, in our opinion at least. And I think it's going to be an asset to the patients also to have quicker transport when they do have to go downtown for cardiac.
And you mentioned to me the very few number of hospitals that have a helicopter on the station.
This would actually be the second one in North Georgia. We've got, they have one in Blairsville. And that's, they're basing this off of what's happened in Blairsville, and it was very successful. It actually drew more patients to the hospital just because they had that at the hospital. So I mean, it's a men-win-win.
Are they the only chopper that lanes now?
They're not. And we discussed that. And it's, that would be an issue if we had multiple choppers coming in.
They may have to vacate the pad.
They may have to vacate the pad. They may have to go to the airport.
They're keeping the hangar, is that right?
Keeping the hangar and the fuel at the airport.
I was going to ask about the fuel. We don't.
No fuel at the hospital.
Well, Mary, we do like to do the old days, block the highway and then land the highway. Is that what we do?
Well, you know where we land when Santa comes at Christmas? There in that little area that we get, you know, fire service, firemen to kind of block it. That would be, that's the alternate.
That's already placed.
It's already placed, yeah.
It's right here. We actually have a gate through the fence. When we built the fence, we went ahead and added a gate there so a second chopper could enter in there. So we don't have to use it very often, but it was there from the original construction.
There's no overhead utilities. All this is underground.
There's transmission wires.
Transmission wires are down here.
Down here, but I'm probably going in the hospital.
Yeah, everything's underground on the campus itself.
Council, if you used the second location or option two, would that demand a?
A different pad?
No. I'm sure they'd use the same pad. Secretary?
I'm thinking it would be City Sewer. There's actually a manhole not far, right, basically right here in the corner between the trailer and the red line on the curve of the road. There is a manhole there, so there's sewage running back to the apartments.
I think that might be future, maybe.
More of this?
Maybe the apartment main office. Or it could be some sewer line that they ran in planning the future development. I'm not sure. Because I know they have quicker access here to the pump station than coming all the way around the road.
I can understand option one would be a lot easier to get to water and sewer power to than option two.
But you said you thought two would be cheaper.
Well, it may be a little bit cheaper. It's completely undeveloped. We're going to have to do a driveway. We're going to have to do a, all the utilities.
Where are you going to park?
There's a amicable electric transfer right in the, where this road comes together. It's right over here in the corner.
Is it the right voltage? Is it the right voltage? Does it do something?
They would have to set a pad transformer and step it down. Like we did in the hospital for them up there.
Now, the council can.
Does this need to come to us to design?
Well, it, no, it's going to be, it's going to be a temporary permit. We don't know how temporary it's going to be. I don't see any reason to make it that complicated. Maybe you can see, I did.
I just don't want to bypass due process. I mean, public hearing. I don't want to slow the thing down, but I also don't want to, don't want us to push.
That would be more of a.
I think they're already to know whether the hospital can do it.
Right.
And I think we're also, y'all are also very early in the planning, so is that correct?
Well, as I understand it, or correct me if I'm wrong, they have a mold issue in their current housing unit at the airport.
Which is, which is a mobile unit on county property at that location that was permitted.
So they have to order a new one. So this is a brand new unit.
The hospital could have this then. But that, we went through much of this in my office when they wanted to bring that one to the county fire department complex in, at the airport. But this, the main thing, the problem about this one is it's going to be so visible to all the property. And, you know, beauty's an eye of the beholder, so.
But they do have a plan of building a apartment structure?
No, not. They left yesterday with a possibility, and I haven't seen anything drawn on their map, at the storage building, add a, an apartment to their storage building, which would be a structure attached to that, which would be more appeasing to the aesthetics of the hospital than slapping a mobile unit in the middle of the parking lot.
Do they, y'all want the amount of parcels for all the medicals? It's all right, man?
What was the discussion on that when you went back? Were you afraid to throw it out on the table?
Well, the reason I did throw it out on the truckers, when I went, table, when I went back to talk to the airlight people, they had already ordered the mobile unit.
That's fairly presumptuous of them. I guess we are going to the zone.
Well. Because I'm just afraid for you, if we go ahead and pass this.
It's open enough for ten more spots.
I think it deserves due process, and I support doing it. But also support putting it through due process. Okay, that Monday night, we'll make this official. We're not, we're discussing tonight. We're actually not even here, we're just discussing. This is not to be made decisions.
No, we're not here.
This is going to be, they're going to be on my agenda. That camera's really not on them. It's hardly how a council meeting after having one of these, because we just have it. But, but this will be before you, and that'd be a recommendation to go before the zoning board of appeals. And they would have to give a decision to allow that. Wouldn't you come back to the council?
Yeah, and I don't want to beat due process. I want this, everything I hear, I'm happy to support. But I also want to support the due process, letting everybody participate.
I've just had a lot of them over, family members over at the hospital, and I think they'd have to be flown out. So if, you know, the quicker the best. The time is definitely.
If you could, if you could, Monday, ring the airflight people's numbers, that's going, how this is going to speed up the fact when the hospital knows plenty of time to advance more often than not, they don't just say, oh, Joe's got to go to Piedmont and load him up. They, they start making prep plans, and that usually gives them a lot of time. Their mold issue seems like it might be the biggest problem they have. And they're about to drop this in the middle of our world, which we're trying to make things more aesthetically pleasing on 515, especially for Piedmont Hospital. And then when Joe comes down here, when he gets out of the hospital, we're going to have a mobile home for a gun and knife shop. We can't say no. So it's, we're off with friends in my office, but it's seem like we can go.
No, I mean, and I realize that's why we're here tonight to discuss it.
Well, have they bumped to maybe a different kind of structure? I mean, how much more would it cost them versus building a double wide to build a small structure?
The problem is, he's already ordered it.
Yeah, I know.
They just called the council up.
Well, the other issue too, I think, is mold. He's got to give his guys, I don't know, I think.
Move it out of that location. I'm sure.
We'd also get some money.
Listen, no decision made. You may have a better argument Monday night at the council meeting.
But we can't make decisions tonight anyway.
This is, this is just for the council to know what's going on with that right there. And you did a good job.
How is your performance?
I didn't mean to throw you in the war for a briar patch. But Jim's right, it needs to go through due process on this once we brought this here. Administratively, I would, like I told you, I said, I kind of like being here as mayor. I don't really want to give permission out to council on this. That's why we're here tonight, guys. But still, look at that a little closer for them and tell that guy to send that thing back. You can leave them there for eons. Move the pad there, and they can live on the pad. Just kidding. I didn't mean to draw you in that. You know, you know how many times, when they designed this campus, how many times they moved that path around, trying to keep it out of this road and trying to get this legal for the DOT? At one time, it was over here, wasn't it? Had to move that thing further and further.
We did our expansion, that's what we moved it in.
We actually left the pad and moved all the roads around.
I know that there was something going on when the DOT was saying one thing. I think Gary pulled in there with a little tractor trailer and approved it to them that they could make the turn in there.
Yeah, we had to have that. And also had to do a physicist's report on the wind on the red lights.
And actually, Norman, I really know the reason the apartment fell through. It was going to be in the middle of your walking trail.
That's right.
It's very near the walking trail.
And that's my, that's my, the walking trail. That's right.
Okay. We'll see you Monday night. Thank you, guys. Did we keep our copies of this?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Von Hedrick, Item B, Burton Street Barn Repairs.
Von Hedrick ain't here.
Von has passed away, Von Hedrick. It's not the first I've ever called Von Hedrick, Von Hedrick.
All right, what we doing first? Roof, camera?
Let's go with the roofs. If you will explain a little bit of your efforts to do in the bid process with this and all this.
We talked, I think we talked about this a month or so ago, about the roofs and how we've got a couple of quotes. And we decided to do the bid process so we could get everybody on the same page. Well, we did that. We didn't have, we didn't have a single bid turned in for either one of these projects. Nobody turned in a single bid.
No work.
Guess not. So to back up and punt, we have the two quotes. One of them is from Alan Nguyen. He has a quote, he gave a quote on the barn of.
And we're thinking Alan thought that he wouldn't have to essentially make this quote.
Right, could, could have been. But he got the quote, his barn quote is $12,250 to replace all the metal on the barn. Now, that's labor materials and hauling off the old debris. That doesn't include any rotten decking or lading or anything.
And there will be some of that, but I don't think to the extent that's going to ruin the budget. So we'll have a change work order at that time to accommodate what he finds. And it should be some lath and a few things that shouldn't be a killer.
The other quote was from Fountain Roofing in, they've got an address of Ranger, Georgia, most of the guys.
The Fountain Boys?
Lonnie Fountain.
Lonnie and Donnie?
Their quote for that was to remove the metal from the barn. Says install lath as needed. But their price was $10,200. It says unable to, unable to determine the amount of lath needed for the job. They got on the bottom of theirs 26-gauge metal. Alan didn't put the gauge metal on his, on his quote, so it's for the barn.
It would be 26-gauge?
Yeah, it's what we require. Yeah, that's what we talked about in the quotes.
So which was the least?
Fountain Roofing had the least on the barn.
And these were a joint bid though, wasn't it? I mean, you have, I mean, you have to do both?
Yeah, they did both on the same day they came out.
Give two different prices?
They give two different prices.
So one can actually win the barn and others can win the?
That's what it looks like. Fountain Roofing was 10,200 on the barn. Alan Nguyen was 12,250 on the barn.
We're not making any decisions, but the council this year and tonight.
And then as far as the fire station, Alan Nguyen had, he had put down the PBR panel, which is what we had put in our quote. It's a one-piece metal. It'll run from the front of the building to the back. There'll be no seams. Fountain quoted two pieces because of the length of the building. His metal is what we quoted, and I looked at, I looked it up. It's, the ribs on this, because of that 212 picks that's on the roof of that fire station, is the only thing that's guaranteed not to leak on that low of a slope. And he's used the PBR panel on that. His quote's $12,319 on the fire station for Alan Nguyen. Now, Fountain Roofing is not using a single piece. They're using the 26-gauge white metal panels, but there'll be a seam across the middle. And to replace the roof on the fire station for them, it's $15,930.
It's not what it says. It's more expensive than it's not, it's not according to the standard.
Okay.
If we total those up, I mean, I don't know how you want to do it, if you want it to make.
Yeah, total both up.
The Fountain's total would.
You didn't say that to that county.
Who's the question?
That's a good question, you just can't do it. No, absolutely not. That's why we've been so very careful with these bids and quotes. We kept this top secret to.
Do it at the house.
Fountain's total price would be $26,130 to do both buildings.
With the correct metal?
No, that's not what it requires. Nguyen had the correct metal that we had asked for. And his is 12,319, and then 12,250.
Total of the two bids is 20,000, 22,900.
His is 24,569 for his, for Alan to do both.
But we could, we could split this.
We could split it and still say.
Say one got the barn, another one got, and get them done at the same time?
See, it would be, yeah. To get Fountain the barn and Alan the special.
Good discussion. Okay. Fire Department Camera, Von?
Thermal imaging camera. I actually brought the demo that they left with us. If you guys want to pass it around, and what it is, thermal imaging camera, it works off of heat sources. Just wipe in it, if you want to pass it around, look at it.
Tell them about the one we bought years ago and how it's come in handy.
The one we bought years ago, the first one we bought was back actually probably '98, I guess it was. One of the first ones in North Georgia that actually have that camera. We was fortunate to get it. It cut our search time for homes down from having to search every room, crawling in every room in the house, which two firefighters go take 15 to 20 minutes to where we could search an entire house in five minutes or less with that camera. It sees through smoke, it picks up the heat. The hotter it is on that, if you look to the right of that, there's a gauge on the side. It shows as wide as the bottom. And then the colors changes as it gets hotter. The hotter it gets, the more red it will get on that. And then in the bottom right corner, it also tells you the temperature of what you're looking at.
So 98. something would be more likely a body.
But it's, those cameras are so sensitive. If you, put it right here on the table. I mean, shat it on the table right here. See that mark I just made? You don't have to, you don't have to push that button. You see my hand right here? You see that? That's how sensitive that is, picking up heat. Now, not only do we use these cameras for fighting fire, but we use these cameras for lost children. We use them on auto accidents. If we get somebody that says there was two people in the car, there's only one there. We had an incident on Cold Road over here one night. Had it not been for that camera, we would have probably left someone laying in the Cudze. Because he was adamant about, he had a friend with him. But he was confused and nobody believed him. So we got the camera we had off the truck, scanned the Cudze, and found him about 50 yards from the cold road up at the Cudze where he'd been ejected. So it actually saved a life that night for, you know, with that camera. That camera, the camera we bought, I think it was '98, we got our first one, was like $12,000.
And we were skeptical on that.
Oh, we were, we were. We've had that camera for a long time. It doesn't work anymore. We need to replace it. We tried to replace one last year. So we're trying to replace it this year. It's in the budget. We have the money in the budget to replace it. And the total price for this camera that we have here tonight is $7,395. We have $8,000 in the budget. In that price, I also had him include, it's called a driveway detection. That's a $7,000 mark camera. I don't want to leave it on the fire scene. So the charging system that goes in the truck, he wired into the parking brake on the truck. If this camera's not locked into the charger, when you push the parking brake off, it sets off an audible alarm to let you know that that camera's missing from the truck. So it helps from losing stuff.
We would hate for you to come back and ask for another.
I know. So, but that's, that's a, that's a $400 option.
Pay for it. They got insurance on.
But that, you know, that's a $400 option that, to me, is well worth $400 when you're talking about a $7,000 mark.
It's going to eat off of you to lay that down.
Oh, it is.
Especially if you're going to. And they're pleased crazy.
Well, the first one we had was twice this size. You had to hold it with both hands, it was like this big. And you had to put it right up to your face to see. These today, as you can see, if anybody wants to see back here. You could just, I mean, it's amazing. You take that in pitch black room and see everything you can see. So we're asking to purchase that in the budget, to go ahead and get that, get that purchased. And last, but definitely not, not least, another generator project. It's actually a generator for the police department that we had asked for originally when we bought all, or not bought, but when we had asked for the ones for water treatment. At that time, the police department didn't qualify because it was basically for infrastructure. It's generated for it. It was put on the back burner. And she, we were told that if the money came out or we didn't spend all the grand, we could get it later on. So in October, I think it was October the 5th, we were notified that the police departments had been approved. That was at the same time that we got the approval for the additional money we had asked for for the generators. So we did get approved for that, but it was. So we did get approved for that, but it was, the police department generator was not in the bid process when we bid the other generators. This generator cost. Through Callwell, we got, we, we reached out to Callwell because of the work that they had done for the city was exceptional. Everything was done on time. No, you know, um, very easy to work with. We had Terry Morrissey come out. And look at it. They'd give us a price of forty-five thousand dollars for that generator. Now, the original price that we had quoted, let's go back to this paper. In two thousand fourteen, when we first started this project, the original price that we put in for the grant was forty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. When they gave us the funding, increased the funding that we asked for in October of last year, and we were granted that money. We actually got forty-nine thousand, eighty-two dollars for this generator. So with that, with this price being forty-five thousand, that will allow, that'll also allow, or should allow, for the cost of putting in a gas meter. Well, no, that forty-five thousand includes everything. That's delivered, that's.
Delivered and installed.
That's delivered, installed, everything for all, I mean.
And you still have.
Concrete pad, the whole nine yards. That's everything. And then the additional money will be to, um, or should help cover the gas meter, the natural gas meter and all that. Yeah. I think the one for the code, but we had to put in about thirty-eight hundred dollars for that meter. This one, I hope, is not as expensive because of the location.
Should be gas already there.
Should be, but I don't know. To be a hundred percent honest, we don't, I don't know about that. So that's the quote that we got. Uh, we'll be bringing that before the council Monday to ask for recommendations on where to go with that. Or what you guys want to do. The bid process for the state of Georgia, anything under a hundred thousand dollars don't have to be bid. So.
And this is a state of Georgia grant or federal?
This is a federal grant. We talked to her about that and she said, use the state of Georgia's guidelines as far as procurement. Uh, we talked, I spoke to Lisa and then we spoke with Kelly from GMA.
Well, I'm going to tell you about the electrician. I was very impressed with the electrician. He was jamming. But I mean, he was super easy to work with. His work was neat.
Yeah.
I mean, it was really neat. So, I mean.
Where the specs come from on eighty kilowatts? That sounds like a.
It does sound like a, it does sound, the, the reason it's eighty kilowatts is there's three different meters on the backside of that building. There's three suites in there. Just all of those suites, that's what they said we had to have. I, I'm no electrician. I can't answer that question. We all suites. But there's, there's three separate meters for that building because of the three suites that was there prior to the city purchasing that building.
And PD's using all three of them.
No cash for us. You got the floor in. And we got two suites, PD.
The thing about, the thing about this grant money is, and I, I understand you said if we could, if we could lower it. But the problem is if we lower the size of the generator that we originally turned in for, then we have to go back to the federal government to change the scope. And we're not going to get done by September this year. Like we have to be finished with this project.
And if we do have something major happen, tornado, whatever, that'll mean we can use some other offices for other things.
Right, right.
And you'll have a place that you can use as a emergency center.
Get power back on next day.
Yeah.
Thank you, Vaughn.
Yes, sir.
Uh, item E, uh, Mr. Ken is not with us. Uh, he'll have a presentation for you Monday night. But we're looking, instead of doing a lease purchase, uh, is buying a Kubota instead of going to CAT. And we've got the bids or quotes for you Monday night. And I don't really want to talk about that numbers until he gets here before you for the vote anyway, but it's very similar to what the lease was, or lease upon. Well, in fact, we're taking the CAT back to, uh, CAT Unloader back Monday, last day of our lease. And then we got to go out Tuesday if the council approves it and get another unloader that will carry most of our equipment. Uh, so that'll be kind of a cut and shoot Monday, but that'll be, and we, we went and tried the Kubota out and the Kubota diggers are closer than CAT. We get it worked on up down five fifteen versus going to Carterville and all the downtime we have. And I kinda like the way the machine is and the way it works a little better. But anyway, item else. Wood bridge and roads update. Lonnie.
Lonnie gonna be here for a few minutes, it looks like. Not just two items right now. I thought you had more. You want to divide, you want to subdivide this?
Whatever y'all lined up. Uh, okay, as far as the wood bridge, um.
I talked to that camera so people know the story on this thing.
The city's been trying to make contact with different companies and everything to get bids on repairing it. I have talked to.
Lonnie, let, let me get up a minute. I know absolutely nothing about what's wrong with the bridge.
Okay.
I listened to you on Facebook. I have received no other information on this. Can you start at the beginning and let me know what's really happening?
Okay.
Because.
Yeah, but you've been asked, you've been asked a few times, haven't you?
Yeah, and, and I have asked and asked about communication on this kind of stuff. And I, I don't want to hear it on Facebook.
Right.
And I'm going to come up later with a, something I would say on the agenda concerning the communications.
Okay. Um, on May the second, DOT called Mayor Weaver and instructed him to close the bridge. And we were, it was like three-thirty in the evening. And so we were talking to him. He had, had me called up to his office. And we were talking to him and going to close it the next morning and they said, no, we want it closed today. So we parked skid stairs across the bridge and closed it that evening. And then the next morning started making, uh, movement to, uh, close it like they had asked, uh, using the procedures. They first wanted dirt with a slope on each end of the bridge. We moved and, and talked to them and they agreed to let us use gravel. Because if it rained, the dirt's going to wash out the street. So it took me a few days, but in staying in contact with them at the DOT. They finally came up with the, uh, information here as far as what is actually wrong with the bridge. The, the work that's needed is a, uh, repair beam, uh, three and nine. Which if you start on this end, I mean, on the south end of the bridge and move, it's, it's divided into sections. And then the beams are, uh, these beams they're talking about are running long ways with the bridge. So three and nine both have damages. There's level beams running long ways of the bridge, north, uh, north and south. And three and nine are the two that needs to be repaired. Uh, it says, replace the left bottom timber, uh, bracing and span seven. So that's just one big timber that's got some decay in it. Replace the left, uh, re- repair the spall on the concrete footing on pile two. So there is a concrete foot in there that's got some cracks in it. Repair some undermining on pile three dash two. So as, uh, way, I understand it. I'm not a bridge person, but I've talked to them. Evidently that's the pylon in the middle of span three, uh, that's needing, uh, the undermining fixed. Secure loose deck boards that's on the bridge. As you drive across it, you hear some of the boards vibrate. And they want those more secure. Replace abutment one on the south end, the big huge timber that abuts up against the road, the street is decaying. And it's got quite a bit of decay in it. So they are wanting it replaced. Replace a defective pylon. Uh, I think it's on, uh, section three on the east side. There's a pylon there that you can see where it has sort of split in different areas. They're wanting that, uh, replaced. And repair the truss portion of the bridge, which is actually the arches in the middle. They're wanting some work done on those. A couple of the bridge people that's looked at it seems to think one or two boards be replaced. And then everything else just tightened up. They're going to have to work that out with DOT. There's a bent number two cowl. I do not know what that is, but it needs to be repaired. And then repair the curbing around the bridge. This is the list of items that it says needs to be repaired or replaced.
Is any of those repaired? Low weight or were these ones that didn't get repaired?
I'm not sure about that. Uh, I don't have a report from two thousand and eight.
Those were not repaired in two thousand and eight.
So I don't know.
And I, I'd like to add here for the council is that when I received a phone call around three-thirty, what date was it on?
May sixth.
May sixth. They did not tell me what was on the bridge. They didn't tell me where to go find what was on the bridge. They didn't tell me anything. They said, close the bridge. We'll get back in touch with you. So for three or four days, we did not know what was on the bridge. We had to call everybody at the DOT from Atlanta to Carterville to track down who would give us the specs that we were going to have to have. So it was not forthcoming as quickly as everybody might seem to think it was. And only recently we started compiling the information that we want to be able to pull together to ask for a bid.
So we know for a fact, none of these objects listed would be required for two thousand and eight?
No, I don't know for a fact, but this is wrought that was not there. This, we're talking about ten years. So at ten years of wooden bridge, even Chris Oates is going to have failure. And we anticipated then, and we were told then, that we'll start, we did, they'll start reducing the weight load as time went. And ultimately we'd have to do repairs in the future because there are more stricter bridges now, especially in local governments that want to maintain a wooden bridge.
But when was the last time before two thousand and eight, there didn't even work with that?
Well, there wasn't work, there wasn't work done, there wasn't work done back in the seventies and eighties. And then, and then, uh, what you have is same as the city of Jasper. We don't be responsible for something that could cause injury or damage and, and be liable for it. So the DOT will not bicker with what's going to be done. They'll simply say it is done or closed. And they closed it in two thousand and eight. And at that particular time, uh, the community became very concerned with, with if the city was going to save the bridge or let it be replaced by a concrete bridge. Everybody was talking back in the day. And they were talking about during that time then. Uh, and I was kind of an advocate of it. I, I felt very much that it'd be a great walking bridge. And, but a walking bridge don't require any repairs until it falls on top of the railroad and ceases to exist. Because there's nobody calling to replace embutments and, and, and pilings and whatever else. So it, it would ultimately fall upon itself if we don't maintain it for traffic. There's not going to be a benchmark to say we got to go repair and replace. As most of the wooden trusses around the country have fallen into ruin because they were abandoned.
Or too expensive to fix.
Or too expensive to fix. But we, then that's going to be a lot of discussion with this council and everybody who's. I'm sure council members received input from everyone with an opinion as to what needs to be done. And, uh, I have my opinion and I'm going to see if it wins because I'm not going to tell anybody. I want to see, I want to see where y'all come from on this because this bridge is important to a lot of people in the community. And a lot of the people in the community could give a very little care as to if it was taken down or not. But the community minded people seem to care that the bridge is safe. It's going to be a lot of debate. How about that?
Have you done?
Well, the biggest thing I worry me about is that work on the DOT.
Requirements on it will get worse.
Yeah, I've got that information.
Especially after what happened down with eighty-five. I mean, everybody's with bridges now.
Uh, but very few communities have a wood bridge with a nineteen thirty-one vintage water tank right next to it. And we do. And it's one of the highlights of, uh, of Jasper, Georgia. So. And just happen to have Overford Monument right next to that. So nineteen thirty, nineteen thirty-one.
No budget, Lonnie.
Okay, I have been in contact with, uh, Lyle Austin and Gustavo James from Comanche Construction. And.
Pronounce that name again.
No, thank you. Uh, but these people, they, they have a bridge company and they work on wooden bridges. Uh, the DOT indicated that this is one of the few companies in the state of Georgia. I think there's three or four companies in the state of Georgia that do this kind of work.
Uh, that they would sell.
Two of them are, it's way down South Georgia, from what I understand. So I have talked to them. They've been out and looked at it and they're working on a, uh, estimate. But they have referred me to Mr. Clayton Bennett, who's engineer over bridges with the DOT. He is also working on, uh, these issues that have been reported to him. He's going to come up with a bid of what he thinks DOT has also started putting, uh, the, they like to have a five-ton weight limit on every bridge around.
What is it now, four?
Right now it's four. So he may indicate to bring it up to a five-ton. We have to do something besides this. So we don't know. Everything's sort of up in the air right now. Uh, the railroad company, Pruitt Railroad, sent a gentleman up here. I contacted Donnie Plumley with the railroad. He got in touch with this company. Pruitt Railroad owns a bridge company in Florida. This gentleman was up here on some other railroad business. And they said, why are you up here going to look at this bridge? So he is working on an estimate. He's got to have it approved by his supervisor. And then his supervisor has got to have it approved by Mr. Bennett with the DOT. So, and he said he might have me an estimate by the first of next week in writing.
How can you give an estimate when DOT hasn't decided what needs to be done yet?
This will be an estimate just for this, what's on this paper.
What, what you call it all?
Yes, what I called off. If this varies one way or the other, they add to or change, then the bid package would change. He's giving me an estimate. It's not a bid.
And again, this company probably knows more about bridges than the DOT does. This, these people build and repair for them. They may find things that they would recommend that need to be replaced as well. So.
But DOT do, we have to satisfy.
Yes, they got to satisfy, but a lot of times they will tell the DOT if this needs to be done or the, the, the city or the owner. So we're anticipating probably some few other things might need to be replaced or repaired. But anyway, council, that is an update on the wood bridge. And Monday night, we really have no business for them about the wood bridge except, and probably tonight will be your update on the wood bridge.
So as far as the road traffic on the wood bridge, we're mostly talking about the wood bridge end. Is that correct?
No, a lot, a lot of people use that to go to their homes, uh, off of Main Street. There's a lot of traffic across that bridge. Uh, Burke Street and, uh, and Chambers.
The biggest vehicle process that it would be, would have been a delivery truck.
Probably twelve going to the, uh, wood bridge to deliver or, but you know, you, you could be, you know, you could get to George Goodrum's little property that's out there with trucks, but it's a straight shot. Once you cross that, you don't have to go up and go down and turn to go across the railroad track further south. It's actually easier access to shoot across that wood bridge. It's tempting, uh, for a truck. But if I was driving a tractor trailer and I saw that wood bridge, I'd think, I'd think different about crossing it. It's, uh.
So the DOT has, they have kind of oversight of all bridges?
Anything where public vehicles cross.
Okay, uh, next item is item G, and this is about to become the, one of the hottest issues in the city of Jasper and Pickens County. Mr. Water, would you like to explain?
Okay, uh, were you talking about the red lights?
I'm talking about the monument.
Okay.
Basketball, which is part, you, you could tell about the red lights first and then go into the next.
How this subject came up, the DOT is going to put these mask arms like up here in front of Walgreens. They're going to put these on Main Street and also the intersection at Community Base. In the conversation with the DOT utilities person.
Oh, Georgia money.
Yes.
Make sure.
Yes. And in talking with him, the utilities guy, he indicated that the nineteen seventy-four basketball monument.
State champion.
State champions could possibly be on DOT right away. And it's going to be an awful closed area to put these mask arms up. And he said that we wasn't obligated at this point, uh, but you know, if we could move it, the contractor would appreciate it. Uh, but you know, if we could move it, the contractor would appreciate it. They don't know exactly where the wiring's going for these red lights and all this. So in doing that, we didn't know if, you know, if it could even happen or not. We, I talked to Stacy Gil, Gillett.
Gillett.
At, uh, school board. Uh, he's agreed that they would find a location in front of the school board.
There's, there's another sign over there by the Board of Education building from the fifties or sixties, I think, some championship over there by the old, uh, by the turnaround out in front of the, the board.
In the middle, in the, in the center?
Uh huh. Like down at the end.
They, they had a championship team back in the day, good women, girls.
Why were we all moved from my strip down there?
This, this is what the school board mentioned, that they would furnish a place.
Letting, I, I think I know some of the stories.
That they would furnish a place to put it down there. Is what they, what they indicated.
She was informing me.
We haven't, there hasn't been a lengthy discussion about this because we, we wasn't sure about who owned the property. Uh, we wasn't sure if the community wanted to leave it there and take a change on these mask arms. Something happened to it. We didn't know. I mean, it's, it's just a discussion. Uh, they didn't call up here and order us to move it. Uh, they were just concerned about what if something happens to it? And they don't want to, they don't want to damage it.
They don't want to pay attention.
And so it's, it's just a scenario that we are looking at discussing. The mayor's made a couple of phone calls this evening and it's something that is kind of.
Who did I call, Jim?
I don't know.
Who do you think I called?
I would guess my neighbor.
Yeah, me.
How many are left there anyway? Of course, the bank wasn't there. Then wasn't there, wasn't there a war noun or something there? What was there?
No, the bank was there.
Yeah, it was. Was that a little? Yeah, it was funky looking back then. It was.
It might be close. Julie Bell Burton, uh, with the grandmothers of a couple of the girls, okay, that was on and her sister that were on the basketball team donated the land, is what the story is. And I'm sure Julie Bell probably paid for it. I talked to Mr. Carr, Coach Carr today and I thought maybe the booth club would have paid for that. But he thinks that maybe Ms. Burton paid for it. And, uh, they feel like it's more of a private property issue than, uh, than the public.
Years ago, I was told about, out of this conversation, but I, uh, someone told me that they have a deed to that property. I don't find a way to force that.
Well, if it can, if it can without interfering with our traffic control devices, and that was our concern. I don't want to move it either because it's been there for.
I agree with that being that.
You're saying it was proper.
Probably not proper. No, I don't.
Well, you're not voting on that for now.
Yeah, I'm going to be saying, I don't have a not being.
Uh, but, uh, but this is information that's hit us. And Jim, what's your, your story?
Just that, I'm, I'm, I'm told that someone has a deed to that piece of property.
Well, I did not want those people to look on Facebook and see us talking about their monument today, uh, without knowing that we have some concern and consideration for that being.
Certainly. Yeah, I won't say if they have to, but I'm just a fan if we, if we can leave it where it's at for.
Well, we're talking, it actually, it actually needs to be renovated, a few things that if it gets to state, we need to make it, make it look better.
You put it down on the school board, that.
Well.
You're not going to say it.
I think, I think all of them will look better in front of the Pickens County High School. Jim, when the championships was written, not, not the only, because that school could be in jeopardy as well, but a new school where it needs to be, where people can go in and see as they're walking into the gymnasium to see that we had a seventy-four championship. But that's board decisions. Our decision is hopefully we get the traffic light in without damaging the monument. So that's going to, you're going to be hearing those stories. Okay?
Get ready for it.
Get ready. Uh, now let's talk about the traffic light in the middle of this. What's, uh, that since you brought that up.
Okay.
Lead us into what's happening with the traffic light.
Okay, they're just, uh, they're wanting to put the mask arms up and, uh, to redo the traffic lights.
Maybe have it sooner or later.
Yeah, they're, they're planning on doing it pretty soon. Uh, I am working on a, it's called GUPS. It's a program with DOT. Uh, I've got to put in our utilities, make, um, you know, let them know where they're at so that they can try not to hit them whenever they're boring or putting in the wiring. And so I will be working on that.
We have sewer and water in that area.
We do.
They won't tell, or machines are unforgiven. They don't, but they won't find it, they won't find it.
And then they will be, they will be putting it in there at Community Bank also. They're putting in five different locations, some in Gilmore, one in Fanning, and two here in Pickens. So, uh.
This project was slated to next year, a year after now, so it's got, it got hot.
They moved it up.
All the vanes and these arms just to get all the electrical out of there.
Yeah, it's more, much more track, much more traction.
It's more stable too.
And actually, these traffic lights that we have up there now, can, that'd be dated back into the seventies when the monument was, but they're old.
I, I just, I, I thought that was it, I just want to make sure. I bet they could be more storm ready too.
They can help. If they don't put their big fans on, they can catch the wind. They have a tendency to do that though now. Anything else, so what, what, tell a little bit about what's going on in front of the old high school with the D cell lane?
Okay. Been making contact with the, uh, Josh McCrory, who is engineer for Southern Gas Company. Uh, I talked to him today. Hopefully, he's going to have me a starting date as of tomorrow to, it's when, when they're going to move, uh, the gas line. They're going to move it back on school property farther from the right away. Uh, for three, a length of three hundred and thirty-nine feet. It will, the exit at the school, the, the, uh, upper exit, uh, from there to Holly Street, there will be a turning lane put in. And.
That's not three hundred and thirty feet though, is it?
Three hundred and thirty-nine feet.
I, I thought the same thing.
That's the figure that they keep giving me every time.
That would be the end of it, right? Making the turn.
Turn, making the, making the turn.
With Edo.
So.
That's a hundred yards.
Small sand wedge, but you make that shot.
Yeah. But the procedure that the, uh, Grant Walbrook, the district traffic engineer told me today, he said that, uh, that they have issued the information to a company. And as the day that the gas line is completed moving, that, uh, the DOT will release this for bid. And as long as the bid comes in under two hundred thousand, and he's sure it will. He said, there's no reason for it to be that. It will be classified as a quick response. And then notice to proceed will be given to the high, uh, low bidders. And then they have sixty days to complete the project. And so that's.
So we're depending, or the project's depending on the gas company right now.
And I should have a date on that tomorrow.
But the gas company's been very accommodating.
Yeah, they're moving at a third expense, uh, starting across the city.
As did the power company back in the day.
Right.
But John, there's one more pole sitting out there, that half pole. Is there anything that could be done with that? I know we're talking about Georgia Power, but I'll talk to you tomorrow about it. Uh, it, it just felt like it's going to be right in the line of the XL when you're going around the curve to D cell into the lane. But when I thought, it felt like one pole, we'll know when we see it. I feel like one power pole might be just still too close. Thank you, Lon.
You want to go with this now?
Yeah. Cool.
Okay. On the bid process for the seventeen streets, uh, I've been in touch with Johnson Paving, who took the bid and, uh, the being low bidder. We have looked at several things and on this here, this will be a change work order. And these things, these items here need to be gone over with, uh, the council and get you to vote on it.
Monday night.
Monday night. Uh, mostly heights is a concrete street. And that area out there, so that was put on this bid package strictly by mistake, my oversight. And so we are having that deducted from the bid package.
But you can pay the asphalt with the concrete and we may in the future depends, but right now, we've decided not to look for a better option.
Concrete's cracking.
In a good shape.
It's cracking. But if we pave over it, it's going to crack the asphalt. So the recommendation by the paving company is don't do it.
They say anything about hospital ceiling?
They did not.
I want to get with Ann as far as her parking lot and see if she can find any federal money for this since it's a federally funded property.
Well, we don't want to put, we don't want to pay the money, but I thought over and coming.
Exactly. And we'll pave other properties for this concrete something there. But that leads us into a, a, a good situation, a potentially good.
Uh, these other numbers that you're looking at is something that Johnson Paving, their estimator, came out, met with myself and the mayor. And something that, something else in the change order, if you go into Jacob Point, they have curbing. And if we go in there and put an inch and a half, that's going to raise it up. There was no milling in this bid contract. So I've got them to give us a bid on milling that down, just, not the whole street, just the curbing area. And so that come to six thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, sixty cents.
We get to keep the milling and hold it on.
Yeah, we, we furnish them a truck, they load it.
And use that back here.
And we use it.
Use it with the dump pond, right.
And then these other items are, while they were here, we talked to them about repaving the walkway at the duck pond and making it a little wider.
And the pond.
And making it look, you know, manicured like. The parking lots, the streets entered, entered it. The, uh, ball field next to the duck pond. All right, this, this is what these figures that you see below that deduction come to. So the total amount is sixty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars for everything. And then we will subtract the twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-five. So that will leave a balance of thirty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-five for a work order change if we add the duck pond and all of that into it.
How about lower leaning park, if they do that?
We, we, we have not yet.
We've not worked over there yet. It's going to need it, uh, it, this has got parking lots, a lot, a lot of asphalt, which probably too much for our little machine, especially since we're not really good at it yet. So we need, we need these guys to do this project because, uh, we'd be over there for months trying to get that done.
Actually, so that I hear you're out, we got seventeen streets on them.
Yes, well, sixteen now.
Okay, actually sixteen streets. How many streets will that leave in the city that would be a fight?
Okay, I've got thirteen more. The city has thirteen more streets to do this year. And that will have everything on the east side of five fifteen, except the streets going parallel or coming into five fifteen. Uh, there's thirteen we're going to, you know, like Frontier, Crystal, Creek, uh, those areas. Um, Rodan Dender, um, you know, there's several streets in that, Oakmont. There's several streets in that area that will be in the next thirteen. That's the package, the bid package I'm putting together now.
My sister started playing, I'm getting, I don't know about y'all, like get asked frequently, how long it's going to be for my streets to be. Because I don't know what to tell them. I mean, I, I, I guess what I want to know is, do we have a tentative date that we've looked for, it's like every one of our streets at the city of Jackson, Jasper, that we had to start out with forty-four miles total, when? Are we looking next, maybe hoping it finishes next summer?
Well, we've got to do, we've got to do what John mentioned, have been that Camp Road, uh, Bill Wigan and, uh, going by, going by their Home Depot and Kroger. Uh, and you have, some roads going to fall apart on us before we get around the cycle, like Camp Road is already showing, uh, damage again. But we've got, uh, we've got to go down the racetrack. We've got to do the street, all that property and Sackett's not been paved yet. So that's what you're talking about, the outer perimeter areas. And then we, but, but before we get there, we'll have everything in the area. We talking about Rodan Dender or we were talking about who's that? Both roads have been paved, we're getting very close.
I've had people up on the upper end of, back in behind Wick, Wiggins, back in there in that area. No, I just, they were, people just live Wiggins.
Right.
We're going to try to park these today.
Oh, oh.
I, I just have people ask, you know, when, when is Mary Street, well, you know, when my street?
Mary Street's going to be done in this first bid package.
But you're talking about that area Hickory and that area probably be next spring for that.
And we're going to start, once we get the, these seventeen or sixteen and the next thirteen this year, and then if we have time and money, do something else. But once we get these two bid packages completed, then the plan was to start moving toward the four lane and come down the four lane, getting all the side streets and arteries or, you know, coming off of five fifteen.
The, the money's there for another three years?
Yeah.
Uh, so we're not going to be finished for three years.
And Main, Main, Main Street's coming probably latter part of next year and first part of probably two thousand and eighteen, nineteen. Uh, so that's going to take up a little big part of the cost. And we're also probably going to use the most high-tech paint that we can get, the, the poly to get it, make sure it looks like it did back in the day. So it's going to be a very expensive proposition doing the street. And if it's at that time, we decide that the traffic flow stays the same, we'll just put it the way it is. But, uh, more likely, it'll be just the way it is.
So this will be something that we ask for you to vote on Monday night is the addition of the walking paths and the streets around the duck pond.
And that's going to bring me into my, uh, what are the updates, Ian, Ian with Lonnie's. Uh, we went over and renovated the park. Uh, I understand there are a lot of people not happy with that. I, I think they must have wanted Six Flags, I'm not sure. We went over and repainted everything they had. We took down everything that had a sharp edge on it. We cut every tree out that possibly could implant and pail a child or an adult. We repaired the waterfalls. We, 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 we tied in so we can now go in and, and open the, uh, trail up from the top level to the bottom level using the old road bed. We haven't done it, that's part of this project is going to take care of that. We're going to put in eight to ten grills for cooking out and things like that, but we didn't have to get those made. There was no reason to keep the park closed until today to accommodate us finishing what we did. We, we painted every building over there, every structure, uh, repaired every jagged edge, whatever it could be. And we were, did not promise them Six Flags. We promised them a safe, clean park that they could use. We covered the whole bed with pine straw, uh, bark. Uh, we cleaned the sand, there was no reason to replace it, the sand was in good shape. And the park is as good as any park that you want to visit.
I was just thinking, I ask you, is it better than White Wilson?
Absolutely.
I go through there. It's a big improvement.
When we.
Are we ever going to make it?
We're not done yet.
No, we're not done, but, but, but we didn't, there's no reason to keep it closed. And, and you, you can't, you can't, we put on what we're doing, we would do it, but it's just a lot of love that people jumped quickly when we have it finished something. We raked it and, and, uh, we, we had our volunteers.
What little piece of their town is it?
Some of it was probably like that, but it was.
Same was.
All, all of the grass and weeds were taken out. It was, the, the parks was much more presentable. And when we get it paved, we didn't, I kept looking at Lonnie, said, Lonnie, will we get the paving here before we finish? No. So I, I, there was no reason to start advertising. And it's fun to be fucked out and cussed out and abused and criticized as mayor because people just think it needs to be done right then. That was two and a half, three weeks of work. And when you're there, you get, you get a call from somebody saying, you need to be on Main Street because there's a weed coming through the track. You've only got three or four employees, it's hard to keep your fingers in a dack. I'm not making any excuses, but we got it all done. We bushhawking down the cove today and we'll be somewhere else tomorrow. But it's just, people just can't wait. And, uh, I love it because I will know it's going to be done sooner or later and we'll get there. The roads, all the roads will be paved.
I drove through it, uh, but I was pleased with what's happening.
And we planted, we planted several thousand dollars of plants and flowers that was not there. We, we let it go fairly barren because it gets used a lot. There's not many places over there where somebody don't walk, kick or scrape. And, uh, but we, we've got more of a garden and we're going to put, place a lot more garden, uh, beds in the area.
So who's supposed to, is it same old people?
Same old, same, well, I, I refuse to look, but some of my employees like come into me on Monday morning and tell me, what, you need to do something about that part. But anyway, uh, you can find them, just go on, go on the internet. Okay, uh, but with that, with that, if council approves it Monday, we'll have that paved. We will close off behind the waterfalls. We will then be able to plant more into that area because we want to access our walking trail from that area is why we kept it.
Cars won't be able to go.
No, we were going to try to, but it was absolutely, every time we moved dirt and tried to make it work, it seemed like it got more dangerous.
Well, and there was a safety issue is why it was closed in the first place. We were afraid of safety of the children throughout here.
Well, actually, the truth is, we were more concerned about people who've had access to park just ride through and check out that we could not control drive-bys. And so.
Safety of children.
Safe to the children, safe to the moms too, safety of everybody.
So we approved some additional funds at the last meeting and.
14,000. We're right at $10,000.
And now we can add all this on top of that to, to the improvements, actual improvements.
What, what we did.
Keep fussy about that.
Doc, we, we had the old train that we've had there for years, we repaired, kicked on it, beat on it, and the kids loved it, but it was absolutely worn out. And it was a homemade, uh, piece of equipment, wood, and it did get splinters and whatever the case may be. And we fragile it back together and finally, they were right when he came in that night, I, you couldn't make it better. You had to rebuild it. So we took that out, we took, instead of replacing, because there's more room for the children to run and play now, so we looked at putting another unit in. And I got a quick quote on it, $34,000 is what the quote I got for what I wanted to complement what was there. So I thought, I just used all the money that I got approved and then some. So we had to go back and punt and tell the people, appreciate them coming up, giving us a bid. We had to get the park safe and clean and move forward with it. That's what we did. Painted every building over there, every bridge, every picnic table, got them fastened down to the ground. Some of them have pads, some of them are fastened down to the ground with concrete, you can't move them and with bark and straw around them. It's pretty, pretty neat.
That is a pretty time of fashion too.
And I spent a lot of time there myself, because, you know, I didn't really want to. Uh, like the guys worked hard on that. You think it's?
The, just for your information, uh, next Thursday morning, the DOT utilities guy is wanting to meet with city staff out at Antioch Road and 515. They're wanting us to uncover our water line that goes under 515 and come up with, uh, an idea if it's gonna be in their way when they do the J-turns out there.
In conflict.
And so, you know, if something don't happen to prevent it, weather or something, next Thursday morning, our crews, we'll have a crew out there locating that. And we've already did it outside the DOT right away, uh, on both sides, east and west. But now they want us to go right up to the actual road of 515 and try to get some depths and some location exactly which way it's going.
Okay. May I add with that, the county commissioner and myself are advocating and politicking to not let that happen.
The J, the J-turns.
The J-turns. And I was told that it was not gonna happen, but Lonnie keeps telling me that the DOT telling him it's gonna happen. And so I'm getting in conflict with powers to be telling them what's true, truly gonna happen, but if that does happen, that will be a disaster. It'll be a disaster for the traveling public. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a gauntlet now, but it'd be a double, gauntlet times two. If you had two more, uh, possibilities of a collision, that's what they're gonna offer. And, but I'd, I'd ask anybody to go, come from Biggins down, and it's, it's actually amusing if you think about it correctly. You start watching these cars move and you wonder if the puzzle's gonna work out by the time you get there. And all it takes is one person making a mistake and you're gonna have a 70 to 80 mile an hour multi-collision. It'd be, it'd be worse than Atlanta 500 when you have an accident with speed and then, then they have those. And I think I have Vaughn here with me can testify, he's probably seen some jawbreakers up there.
Seen several out there, several fatality. You think people with DOT, you with DOT would.
All they'd have, all they would have to do is block that crossover. Not let cars come from 136 and go toward L.J. They've gotta go all the way down to Antioch Church Road, come up to this new thing called a traffic light. Use the rules of the road, go north, you don't have these rabbits crossing the road when you first come off the hill up there thinking, I'm like, is this, is this gonna be a wreck and I'm gonna be the first one there? And that's, that's what you feel if you pay attention to what you're coming off that mountain. And the DOT thinks that's a good idea. But, uh, they need to send that traffic all the way down to 136, Antioch Church Road, come up to the traffic light, then send them to L.J. safely instead of letting them have, a tractor trailer, one tractor trailer and one car wanting to go south and another one wanting to get in the lane with them is, is a scary proposition. And they don't realize that. We've told them.
Commissioner did with DOT, you gotta change their plan.
Well, the politicians can, and maybe they'll see this workshop.
Okay, the last thing for your information about streets is, uh, you know, when we resurfaced Cove Road, there was a delay in getting it striped and everything due to the company being overwhelmed with work. So in order to try to prevent that, we've already notified them and sent in them a list of the streets that we're gonna be resurfacing. They've already got us on a list, so once the research is done and we've signed which streets, so I have what stripping. And then if you pass this Monday night about the parking lot at the, at the park, uh, we will add that into the list. And hopefully we can get it taken care of, uh, a little faster than we did with Cove.
The, the link.
Uh, working already ahead on that, so they've got us on the list.
And there's not that many companies, are we looking at Parker or Peach State?
Parker.
Parker. So they, 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 their pricing has always been very close to the same and every now and then we'll bid it out. But we're not bidding this out, it's usually the old price. Same price the county gives, they use this part. Okay, so that's, that's moving down the pipe. Mr. Hall. Uh, you've got a couple three items. Sorry you took long to get to us, but appreciate it. Uh, gee, and I've been writing item M.
Which one do you want to go first?
Uh, good, good. Go with, go with resolution dot water conservation plan.
Okay, this is the resolution that will be sent to y'all Monday night to pass. It's a water conservation plan that we're required to pass to get the water treatment plant, uh, permit increase that we've talked about multiple times from 2 million to 2.4 million. And this is a resolution that being prepared for us to get y'all to sign. It's just a saying that the city will follow the conservation guidelines and stuff where we can get the treatment plant moved up from 2 to 2.4 million.
And how many times in the past week's signed a resolution to, for a water conservation plan?
Probably. We've had it increased, uh, since I've been here, 94, it's been increased four times.
They always ask us to do these water conservation plans. And we'll be looking for every leak, whatever, and I told David this morning, as soon as we get that information, get that apparatus that we're gonna put on. Give the council a quick update on that if you don't have it in here about get the pumps sorted out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the, uh, I, I do have that, I have a picture of.
Have I got into your presentation?
No, we're still in consultation. So this is part of, uh, I think will protect our, when the mayor contacted Turnip Seed, uh, the turnip seed engineering, the first thing he referred to was about the pumps coming on and off and have an interaction with the distribution system. So with this pump, uh, that's our variable speed drive. It's installed, they've gotta get a couple of fans or something on it that's wanting to run hot in the box that they got in. So they're gonna first try just doing fans in it, and if the fans won't work, we're gonna have to actually air condition the box to where. But that is for us where we can set our motors and pump to the speed that we wanna set it to versus having to cut one pump off and cut another one on. We'll be able to, John's pushed for this for years. Uh, and that way you can control your flow through your distribution system by what you want, not just by what that pump wants. Church, Church, the county has them to work, they can control.
Best way to say it is like using throttle on your car.
Yes.
You feather it, treat your car nice, your car's gonna run a lot longer. You gas it, let off, you gas it, let off, and along when you fixing something.
It'll bust, it'll break a line somewhere.
It's a good analogy. So that's a resolution that will be put forth for y'all to sign, uh, Monday night.
Okay. Uh, environmental info, environmental information document?
Okay, this is a document that Turnip Seed has sent out to us, uh, also to its environmental information document. And it's just keeping y'all up to date on everything that they're doing as an engineering firm to keep moving on getting our plant expanded from 0.8 to 1.5 seats at our sewer plant. And this is listing some of the stuff that they're going over and will, um, they're going as far as they can on what y'all have already approved is basically what this is. And then once it gets to a stage to where, okay, to go any further, you know, we gotta have money. And then they'll be coming back to y'all, you'll be talking numbers.
That's on the waste side?
Yes, the wastewater. Yeah, this is water, that's what.
What about the public hearing? Is this gonna be covered in this or are you?
Public hearing's gonna be on this one, be on the water conservation.
I'm gonna, you, you didn't mention that earlier.
Yeah, to have this, we'll have to have a public hearing toward if anybody has anything to say about the plant being expanded from, uh, 2 to 2.4 million, they'll be able to come in and say whether that'll happen and give reasons.
And those dates will be explained to you Monday night in more detail?
Yes.
The money for that, we'll have to borrow or?
For the plant expansion, we're already done. We don't have to spend any more money for the water plant expansion. For the sewer plant expansion, uh, the council.
There'll be a grant and a loan.
Yeah.
From the waste?
Yes, and the mayor and the council have already turned it down one time back in 2007.
Mm-hmm.
It was about 8 million and, uh, yeah, everything went bad. But now we're thinking maybe we can get most of the project done for 4 to 5 million versus the 8 million.
We, we cut back some.
Yes, what we want.
There were some, some, uh, they forced us, they were gonna force us to do a few things, we took that grant that didn't make sense at the time.
Yes.
It makes time now.
Yeah, the mayor.
Time to look at it.
Yes. Yeah, so there'll be.
Time to leave it then.
There's another, I've got that pump station y'all approved that we, uh, are gonna be coming under budget on, y'all approved up to 10,000. And that's part of, that's, we'll have all we've got on it. Hopefully, maybe by the council meeting, I'll have it running and have you some more information on it. We've got just about everything installed, such as some plumbing and they're gonna set, they're gonna set the meter, huh?
They've done a lot of work.
Yeah. They're gonna get the, finish up a little bit of plumbing on it. That's to buy water from Kelly, that y'all approved in Hill City. That's what we give y'all with that.
So about one?
It's just a two-inch, it's just a small, only thing they can give us is about 100 to 100 feet a gallon a minute out there in that area that's coming from Kelly. And so we install it whenever the plant blows, whenever, you know, everything gets bad, we cut them off down here and they feed us over here because they can buy from Church and, and we can't without telling them to surcharge and kick out of us. Uh, but they can, they've, they've got more of the puppy where they can buy. I didn't mean it personally. But, uh, so the 300, it would be like a 300,000 ounce swap versus them buying 150 from us. We would cut that off. And we'd actually start buying 150,000 a day from them, so it would be a, a big health bearing of drought contingency time to help us make it further without having to pour more water out of our mines.
Okay, with that, you have anything else to add on that?
Uh. The camera.
Okay, let me, let me jump in before you do the camera. I'm gonna bring up Ian in David's conversation, the Marble Hill Well. Uh, David and I, we told you before, went over last summer, a year ago, uh, and, boy, it's the marble, the water coming from the mines and we got excited and, and that was after, uh, Mr. Poole, uh, the Poole's came brought to me the, the old water, uh, pump test of the Marble Hill Well. And we got pretty excited. I brought that to you about September, August, September, October last year, at the technical meeting I believe we had. And we were gonna do another pump test and, and of course, it started raining and things got, got knocked back and we decided to hold off till summer to get more into conditions that what the drought would be like. And during that time, I enlisted or recruited the help of a gentleman by the name of John Klein, who is probably knows more about the Georgia marble industry than most people who are Georgia marble. And he, uh, took my pump test and he went with me on one, two occasions, one occasion, two occasions to Georgia Marble to meet with them and, and, uh, one occasion. And, uh, and we had a great meeting and they were very interested in helping us and they were concerned, of course, uh, about us being there pulling water for public, uh, needs and, but not overly concerned. And it's still very helpful because of Mr. Klein's knowledge and influence. So anyway, we rocked on and, and, uh, I'm out doing my rounds and I get a phone call from Mr. Klein. And he's, he says, John, have you read the pump test? I said, well, yes, sir. You wanna give me a test? He said, well, he said, did you read the last paragraph? I said, well, I, what is said? He said, he said, after pumping for so many days, so many hours and pumping 300 gallons a minute, did you read where it said that sinkholes appeared? We removed the pump and abandoned the project. I said, well, yes, but that's a lot of water. He said, well, you, we don't need to be pumping over there if we're gonna create, uh, sinkholes. I said, well, that's correct, but there's still a lot of water. He said, yeah, but there's other places we can look. So we decided to save the city $17,000 to duplicate what we wanna find out anyway. Even though I did wanna see that pump and I went to be there while it was being pumped, but it's not worth 17,000. So Mr. Klein and I are looking at other areas and, and he's got his eye on Whitestone more than any other place and possibly even, even the Sandy Bottoms area, away from the different aquifers where he's aware of where the water is and how.
And we looked at Whitestone already, man, that water's contaminated or something. I, I've, I've heard that, I just.
No, uh, not that I don't, uh, but Whitestone, Whitestone actually.
They took me away to remember what.
If you find out, let us know, but, uh, Mar- Georgia Marble Company is even willing to work with us and so John's enlisting a lot of guys. Now, Mr. Klein will be the first to tell you that he's had some conflict with Georgia Marble. And you, so, but he, he's remitting a lot of fences because he's trying to do it for the public good and they're being receptive. And I believe we'll have a chance to look at what they have in, at Whitestone area as well as he wants to look at the Sandy Bottoms area where there's, uh, might not be influenced by those, those sinkholes. So we were not dead in the water yet, but I had to give up on what I saw was the, it said the first.
We knew that was an issue.
It said, the first paragraph, it said, the best well in the P-Mon. And I thought, I thought that was really a good sign. So, but with his knowledge of sinkholes and being there when that thing blew out in 96, 90, whatever year it blew out. What year was it, Jim? 96, 98, something like that?
Before that, because I left in 97 and it'd been quite a while before I left, so I'm gonna say.
94, 95?
Three, three or four.
Okay.
So, so they don't think the water they're dumping is good enough for us to use, is that?
Well, that's something, that's something, that's something we can look at, but I think the Environmental Protection Division is recognizing that as water that's already going downstream. So we'd have to probably get Mr. Turnip Seed involved in working with the Marble Company to get that. That's not dead in the water, but pump tested.
State of Georgia, rather than.
Well, I think they want Etowah River lines to have it or whatever. But anyway, uh, thank you, council, on that. And if you have any questions, feel free to call, ask, prod or whatever.
About, uh.
Uh, the next item is, you got a camera for the maintenance department?
Yeah, for the same. Go ahead.
Well, I didn't say it's in the budget, but I want David to explain to you what it is.
Center Sewer, uh, collection system, we're needing to have a new camera. The camera we got, uh, was purchased, what, mid-'90s?
Yeah, '96, '97.
And it's pretty much went its course and this camera can be used to find where you've got stop-ups and stuff and without having to take the whole parking lot, dig up the whole parking lot or whatever in short time, it's familiar with them. Uh, our camera's just shot and y'all have approved it, uh, for the budget already, but the mayor was just wanting to make sure y'all were made aware of the business of $8,900 purchase. And this is the only bid that we have right now, but we've got two more bids coming in, uh, for the camera, this is a color camera. It's, uh, what is it, got 200 foot of cable? I think is what it comes with. It's either 100 foot or 200. Uh, but it's where you can camera 200, where you can camera back up into your collection systems.
It's a terrible feeling when you don't know about stopping, you can.
Is it gonna rent it out?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, there's no, nothing, it's gonna hurt if you use it.
Is this gonna have the locator on it too, so you can trace them?
Yeah, yeah, well, you can trace.
Where your water's large is all, all just some, all people.
I'm not sure I got that bid. I'm not for sure she's getting two more. There's not a whole lot of companies that. There's not a whole lot of companies that aren't involved with those things anymore.
You got the convention, is it?
Yeah.
In the office here, clear one.
Yep.
Thank you, David. Appreciate you being here.
That'll be, run to y'all, uh, I guess Monday night also?
Yeah, mm-hmm. You're going to be here today for me, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, item K, planning zoning, Sonny. You familiar with this?
A little bit. Good evening, everyone. Hand down here. Monday evening, I will be presenting the annexation of a piece of property. Two point three four acres, which we know was kind of the old Pepsi property. But, uh, as y'all know, that's all you'll be considering is the annexation of the property.
The move resumed?
Yes.
Okay. They're going to be coming in as C two.
Coming in as C two.
Yeah, so, so to help me with that, see, it's currently highway business or something? We don't even have that.
No, that's a county business.
Okay.
It's, they're equivalent to our commercial. And it was the only commercial property there before the development happened around it.
Everyone refers to this as the Popeye's property. But it may not be a Popeye. You don't know that it's going to be a Popeye, but if it was, this is what they're thinking about doing. But I talked with the people from SCS, C, I'm sorry, CSC, who are, have requested this, uh, zoning, uh, the annexation and zoning. And the gentleman, the things you all are reading there is someone's interpretation of what might happen. And this man told me, he said, all we're concerned with is getting this property annexed into the city. So that if we had something to put there, we could be eligible to get the water and sewer.
Well, what Sonny's saying, the owner, the owner of the property could have come in and said, I want to annex my property, which most of the properties in that area was annexed like that. We didn't know Wendy's was going where it was and we had no idea when the Jack Short bought the property, sold it, divided it up and next thing you knew it was coming as commercial property. And you end up Wendy's, Bojangles, uh, the liquor stores and whatever else. And the owner of this property could have very simply said, I want to annex it in the city. What are you billing? I don't know. I've negotiated something, but they've, they've got very, very out front with what they want to do and it's created more of a conflict than, hey. But go ahead, Sonny, I didn't mean to take over your zoning.
So anyway, uh, Monday evening, I'll be, if, if Mr. Gore is not here, I'll be presenting the findings from the, uh, planning commission for you all to consider. And, and all it will be will be the recommendation of the planning commission to you. And of course, that's nothing binding to you all. You can.
And, and feedback from the public hearing.
Right, and, and everybody has a chance to get up and say what they want to say then.
As well. And you have with you a letter, I think, from one of the people who is, turning Popeyes is coming.
We sent out letters to people that are within, within two hundred feet of this piece of property, telling them that this property is, that they want to resumed this as C two and annex it into the city.
And you advertise.
How far is two hundred feet to, uh, to Bubba's, you know?
Well, see, the man that owns Bubba's owns a piece of property right beside Bubba's, so he gets one.
Well, I own a piece of property. I'm disclosing potential conflict, but I can still talk about it, but I own a piece of property right next to Bubba's. And, and I'm not saying it's two hundred feet or not. I didn't give that.
On the other side or?
On the other side.
He's off the normal route.
Your, 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 for the turn.
And, uh, but go ahead.
I don't remember where I want.
Something about, something about doing whatever it wants to this big property, I think.
No, uh, but we, we have sent, we sent letters and we advertised in the paper that this was being done. And we only had one person call up and that was, uh, opposed to it. And, uh, they've had over a month to send us anything they wanted to send. And if there is any, if, if this should be what goes in there. CSC knows that there's engineering that has got to go on for getting out into the road and all. They haven't done that yet because there's no need for them to do it because they don't know that the property's in the city yet. So they will, they will take, this is a pretty big engineering project. They, they will do whatever it takes and then that will come before you all too.
So this may be a common theme, but I, I wouldn't wear the meeting if I hadn't been, I'd have been here, but, um, you know, I think, um, we can talk about that as far as communications and how the council mayor may not be involved in.
Well, you really don't want to be there.
Yeah. And I, well, I'm still real agreeing, so.
You, you want to be sitting there open-minded at the council meeting and not swayed by one or the other.
Yeah.
And try to act best on behalf of the citizen.
We don't have any of the contentious things.
I mean, I'm, I'm.
I've, I've been on zoning board for, I was on it for a number of years.
Right. Well, I, I will fully disclose any, if, I mean, if I make comments Monday, I'll fully disclose.
It don't, it don't take but one experience to get a lot of education with this. It's not an issue. Jim was praising us to be on zoning board for a long time.
So, and honestly, an annexation, there's not a lot, I mean.
It's only, only way I could get a little sun.
I, I didn't realize until I've seen this document that Gary wants to, whether, I guess somebody does it, Gary, he wants to divide this property.
It's Gary and Patricia, right?
Yeah. Is there anything in our current that would prohibit him from dividing that property?
Well, he's up dividing it. They're, they're annexing.
So they're buying both?
I don't know that they're buying both, but they're annexing the whole piece of property, two point three four acres.
Gotcha. So, so we're not approving his ability to divide this property?
No, 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 no. Right here, this is all we're doing.
This application?
He's letting.
And I'm not saying I'd be against that or afford it. I don't know what I would.
That's just an authorization that he is letting CSC do, go through, pay all the fees and go through all of the, uh, things that they have to go through for that piece of property.
Gotcha.
But he's going to, he just won't let this property sell.
Well, he's going to, he's going to sell them.
I'm going to take.
Maybe I'll, I don't really know, but, uh.
But he'll basically submit a planned unit development whatsoever.
They'll have to.
We'll have everything laid out the way it's going to be, so what's going to be, what can be built on the, on the size of lots. Uh, you're taking up a big portion of it with the Popeye's parking lot and the, uh, so you won't have a strip mall. You'll have another, a business pretty much similar to what's there. Okay, anything else? Thank you, Son.
Phone covered up with. Some comments or should I wait for them for Monday or?
You know, if you want to ask a question, feel free.
Well, I've watched the, uh, I've watched the meeting and so I've noticed some of Crystal's concerns with the owner of Bojangles. And I think she, to Gary's point, has some valid issues with the traffic flow on that little small corridor. And, um, again, I don't necessarily know the process for how we plan what the traffic flows are going to be and how we can impact it and cause what. And so I think that, um, not, not tied to this particular piece of business, but somehow I think we ought to devote some energy to figuring that out.
Uh, I agree. And about the only answer you have, you need more room. And Bojangles and Wendy's have got the most miniscule lot that you can have and still call yourself commercial. And they, and they still used up too much of the area between their curb and Camp Road's curb. And if you're going to have that improved, they're probably, you're probably going to have a curb dividing, uh, Wendy's and dividing Bojangles from Camp Road in order to get enough room.
To set up the Victorias there.
To build a road. And I think I heard that she complained about the left turn to nowhere. Mr. Waters, could you, your memory is better than mine. Could you help council remember why the left turn to nowhere was placed there?
That lane there that dead ends before you get to fifty-three, uh, whenever they built the Bojangles and the Wendy's, people were parking there instead of going into the parking area.
Making money.
And it became a huge mud hole. And then when we repaved Camp Road in order to do away with the mud and people sliding and things, went ahead and paved that area. Because if you put a, a, a ditch and a turn signal all the way out to fifty-three, you've got to involve DOT, D cell, X cell lanes and all that.
But we did that at city expense, not the developers, which was Bojangles, Wendy's and all the others, uh, that Mr. Short, I think, developed. And it, it's like you sell a piece of property during that time, you sell it to Bojangles, oh, uh, we're going to tie on to that sewer line that Mr. Mullins ran. Uh, Mr. Mullins says, oh, well, no, I spent eighty thousand dollars running that sewer line. So we had to go back and try to collect funding and also as a deep bore, because it's a directional bore. And all this was done hindsight because everybody ran, it was quite a land grab at the time. Everybody wanted to get Sherry Martin's property and develop it. And it's a, it was quite a mess. And that's why you ended up with the left turn to nowhere, which was going out into DOT. The DOT would come over and they would give you very little option, this is what, the way it's going to be and this is how it's going to be if you want to put a traffic light there. And they're the ones that put the traffic light in or allowed the traffic light.
When you say the left turn to nowhere, are you talking about her?
It's coming out of her location, uh, but it was, it was done because it was the way they laid it out. The developers laid it out, they left a mess.
Where the road kind of dead ends and sort of like the right turn.
You can't get, you can't get around it because it just goes there and stops. It needs to be and she's right there. If they want more road and that's just on, from her driveway to fifty-three. The real problem is Camp Road past her driveway going toward the Bargain Barn.
Right.
And that is going right into the Davis family property, who was not in favor of any of that bid built around them. And they've not been very accommodating for any of the construction. So getting that easement across that property is what I'm going to have a difficult time to help, uh, the owner of Bojangles out.
Her request is different than what I'm hearing and you probably know that already, but I do, I mean, I.
Well, I think she mentioned that I said I would do this when we got the spots. Uh, we're going to be there with spots doing all this paving and whatever, those things will be corrected. Uh, but I didn't say that they had got past, we'd come over and solve all the problems of the world with, uh, with the spots money. But there is, we got a better chance to do it now with spots money than with this general fund for the city of Jasper, that we had no money to correct developers' problems that they did.
These people will have to conform to the state DOT. They, they're, they're not going to get this property annexed into the city and then just run over there and build.
Do what they want.
So when Wendy's and, um, Bojangles built, did they have that same requirement as far as, I'm sure they did, combined with the DOT? And did they make any kind of request at that time?
David?
Crystal's kind of a, she was a, and she's definitely a whippersnapper and that's a compliment, but she was young and the Wendy's guy's very, I mean, he's got, I don't know how many stores.
He's got thirty-five or forty.
He should have known that he, you know, if he wanted, there were some specific issues that was the time to address.
He spent a bunch of money on that building just two years ago.
And the smallest parking lot in the history of Wendy's.
All that, all that over there, all that commercial property over there, people remember years and years ago, on that one side of the highway was residential and there were three houses. Francis Champion's place, that where the Wendy's is at, um.
Old Fried and somebody else.
They were a whole home.
Sherry, Sherry.
Sherry Martin, everybody's on drive on.
That was Lloyd Laxton's house, if you remember.
And then where the Chevron's at, that was a whole home plus two. So there were only three houses, three residential houses there, so, and it's not like those properties were very big to start with. And so they only have what they have to work with over there.
And you had speculation running rampant during that time. And they were buying property and then after the fact, go, we got to make this work. And then they, we got to have a traffic light. So the DOT comes, oh, by the way, we want to build a Home Depot and a Walmart in the middle of, not Walmart, but.
Burger King and all that.
So all this was happening helter-skelter. There was not a planned unit development here and that was, the road we got there was the best thing the DOT could bring up to make it happen. And we had nothing to do with, I was on many arguments with the DOT as this needs to be bigger. This, we need more to happen here. And then you had curbs being laid and you had, uh, pavement being put and you had buildings going up. And next thing you know, you're sitting in Wendy's looking at, how'd this happen?
Yeah.
So, and they were part of.
So we're talking about small lots and if Gary divides that, I mean, yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm trying to get as a government entity, which.
I'm sure, go ahead, you're, you're right. Go ahead with that issue, right?
Well, I just want to make sure that we're, he's going to have to do whatever the DOT says he has to do before you divide that property.
Well, we, 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 we got to approve the division of it and, and make sure they have the ample parking and meet codes that we have in place. Uh, but, uh, biggest issue is I, I don't really want another mini Wendy's, uh, where you can't, you, you one way in and one way out. I think it's only place in state you've got a Wendy's like that.
Well, they're getting, and this, they're getting a, they're proposing to get a easement to go out on fifty-three. On fifty-three through that driveway that's out.
And they have larger access than Wendy's does.
Right.
Wendy's had that one extra parking space, they couldn't give them.
Has proposed that.
Yes.
So the DOT is not approving any of this?
No, no.
Because that seems to be a misunderstanding as well.
I see, I see no reason it won't be approved by the DOT.
But they'll be, I'm sure they'll, you know, add their little fingerprint to it so you'll know. But no, there's, there's nothing been approved and, and they could do nothing right now without the approval that the Georgia DOT and the city would, would give them.
What you, what you need to understand is all we're voting on is annexing it in the city.
Oh, I understand, right.
As C two. If the use after that, it could be, there's twenty pages of C two.
Exactly. I understand that part, but.
It could, anything can go on there.
I do think it's a critical area in our city and, and traffic has come up, um, like six months ago, there was another, uh, attempt at a resumee on a piece of property there. And despite whether that was the only reason that it wasn't, or, well, actually they withdrew their bid because the, the zoning folks, uh, decided they were going to recommend to the council that it not be.
It was seventy houses.
Right, not fifty, I think, but fifty bills.
Yeah.
But any, but, 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 but traffic was part of the concern for that, um, same decision. So I just want to see if there's some way we can separate it, but at the same time.
Well, that was kind of a spot zoning versus this is the same.
No, I'm not questioning the zoning or the, or the approval or disapproval. I'm just thinking it's a key area and we need to figure out a way to.
Because this piece of property is going to be, it's going to be utilized one way or the other, if, if it's now or whenever. I mean, it's a, it's a commercial piece of property.
Well, I've been trying to get that property annexed in the city for twenty-five years. I can't believe they finally asked to do it. They had that with sewer, which goes back another twenty-five years. So, uh, but anyway, and what I'm hoping is that the complaints, and I'm going to say it, the complaints is not because it's competition coming across.
Well, that's part of it.
Well, I hope it wouldn't be. I was going to give them the benefit of the doubt because you can't, you can't legislate your competition.
It's deeper than that too, but, um.
That must be a cut then if it's deeper than that.
No, it's, I mean, I, I have a lot of admiration for that young lady and, um, and.
Well, that's why I was hoping it wasn't the fact that it was competition, because she can compete with about anybody but Bojangles. She's put more and more chicken biddies out of business in Jasper.
But, but she's young and maybe doesn't feel that way. You know, but, I don't know, maybe I'm on camera here or something. But she, she does realize, um, I mean, she, she's benefited from her accomplishments, sure.
Absolutely, and she will continue, I'm sure.
I think so. Oh, by the way, that piece of property I heard home out of town is where Chapman Funeral Home used to be.
Yes, yes.
And it was also the home of Dick Britton before it was that.
Did you ever home any property there?
No, there was a, Dick Britton's house there was a brick house, was about like any house, an old house. And then there was a great old big two-story house out there across from the theater.
Sitting up on.
Well, where was the, when they were born, that's sitting there somewhere. No, you don't remember that? Or is that one of the Coca-Cola plant was? Yes, following place. That Coca-Cola bottle, what was there?
Brady Jones's house.
Okay.
What do you think about Greystone?
Huh?
Maybe think about Greystone.
Greystone was.
Well, Greystone was Elizabeth Archer's mother built that, that was Archer Court.
They had Borden.
Well, it was a motel, it was a motor home.
Motor home, okay. Okay, old lady, just on this stuff. Financial update, uh, a little bit going on about the budget and whatever.
Yeah, I only got a couple things, uh, auditorium, a kind of, the council meeting, let me not to go over our audit financials two thousand sixteen. And, uh, I was. And I was just going to tell you, I'm working with GMA, because our loan set up, that I'll put in there first. Probably will come up Monday in the near future, the next meeting hopefully.
Thank you.
Have a sound resolution on that.
John, oh, City Black.
Yeah, just want to remind you, we talked about it at the last first session, we need to sit about getting the committee, and we've wanted Bill Pickett to be a part of it so we can look at other ordinances nearby on the City Black so we can look at, if we're going to split all this money between Jasper up, we need an elegant plan, and this is the best way for us to have a game plan.
One man's black might be another man's trigger. I agree. We will put that on the list and I'll sign a little committee on that.
Put that on your agenda.
And then Jasper Gym repairs, let everybody know, you get complaints from some parents. The fans inside the gym are not working, they've gone out. And so we've got to sit about getting them things repaired somehow or some way.
Well, I told John, we did it before, it's a very expensive proposition, and I did call the Cooper School superintendent, he was going to get back with me on trying to assist in getting that done. But if he does not, and we continue to hold on to that gym, I would like to serve notice that the Jasper Youth Sports Association golf tournament is going to be solely to help subsidize the gym because the city can't.
Jasper Elementary. Oh, elementary. We've got youth today for JYSA.
The City of Jasper's contribution in 2016 was $10,882 just for utilities, gas south, torch power, water. And the ball fields, we provided $7,000 for the gym and $3,877 to run the ball fields for the JYSA. And then I throw a $10,000 out to them. But I would like to take the funding that we receive from efforts of the mayor's office and staff to build, do that. We usually bring eight to nine thousand dollars. We could offset a lot of the costs and get those things done instead of begging. And we still spend the 10, $7,000 from this out of the general fund. But if I can, if you can notify the JYSA, that we'll take care of it, but, and I'll talk to the superintendent of schools. But there was a responsibility of the school system to help maintain that building because they didn't want it to fall into ruin like changing a driving bridge into a walking bridge. And somebody, you can't leave that roof open and you can't leave the wind blowing damage done, and somebody's got to get on it right then.
Just let the JYSA have worked for the city, they spent $13,000 on the.
That's all, you keep telling me, I'm not going to be thinking.
They're working with Jasper. Trying to help too. I mean, there's, it ain't like they're just using it and not putting back into it. So, I mean, they do other things, they kept making stuff and maintaining the gym too. So, I mean.
Well, it's been a good partnership, but I'd like to take that money that I can earmark to keep your gym in good shape.
And that's where it needs to go, it's your money. So it's where you want it to go.
Because when I just throw it to you and I see it, then I turn around trying to keep the gym up and get beaten up because the fans don't work, the water fountain went out. And my biggest concern is the plumbing in that building under that slab when it starts breaking apart, which is starting to show issues. We're going to have to do some serious work repairing plumbing like what we're doing here at City Hall. You've got to call in the contractor.
And we may need to look at another.
Either that or we have ownership of it. It's hard to spend money, I think.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
We want it.
Legal to spend money on something we don't know, real estate we don't know.
We need to give them a lease, we need to give them a dollar, we can lease something. But we've been spending money on it for a while.
Well, maybe we need to go back and look at the lease that, no, we may have.
We left that meeting that night, you remember, with our tail between our legs and glad we had it. And we saved it for the JYSA, and they've used it for about 10 years now. Has it been plus or ten?
It's probably been a while. It's been exactly 10, but it wouldn't be a part of all of that.
These may have changed that we have other solutions out there, I don't know, explore.
Something we can talk about, this is just for discussion purpose, I'm sure John did. But I'd like, I'd like to, if we stay on the path we are, to have money to spend on these things instead of trying to come up with it. Item Q, workshops, Jim?
I think this was an issue that I wanted to see how we could have time during the meeting, I don't know, rather do it at the end, an open conversation where members of council can bring up issues possibly to be put on the agenda for the next meeting. So when you do this agenda, include some time for council to bring up issues.
Well, the mayor gets to make such the agenda, one of my few privileges, it looks like. You can call me, John, I've never turned one of you down if you want something on the agenda.
I think it would.
But I don't want to turn it over to five men beginning an agenda.
I think we can discuss the agenda and it's voted on by the council.
I bring it to you every Monday night that way. If you've got something you want on it, I've ever turned you down. I've got a whole month to bring it together.
And I'm not saying that you have. I'm saying if we spend some time in this meeting to talk about issues that we can send to you for consideration. I'm not, I can't vote in here on the agenda on Thursday night.
No, but I can't read time, call one time that I ever said, Jim, I'm just not going to do that.
I don't think that's a concern.
But how would you, how would you want to bring me to that?
Let me go back to my comment. Some time at the end of this meeting, our Thursday night workshops, where we have an open discussion, that we talk about issues that possibly could be added to the agenda.
Okay.
It's your agenda.
It is, it is, I kind of like that. But I will take your considerations always at heart and put it on there. But right now would be a good time to open the floor for if you want to talk about items that we need to talk about, I'd be happy to hear those.
Well, one of them I mentioned earlier, on the wooden bridge. It's not proper for us to be caught unaware of what was happening with that. I found out about the wooden bridge on Facebook. Lonnie did do a Facebook presentation, or however you want to call it, through Marty and Heather Business. That was a help. But I need some sort of communication from City Hall about what the issue was with the wooden bridge before June 1st, when it happened on May 2nd. And I would like to have a discussion at council meeting on how we get that information.
That'd be fun. Soon as it hit, Lonnie said, I'm putting this on Facebook, and I said, that's a good idea. I did not, I did not think at that particular time, the 3:00 afternoon, that I need to notify the council that the bridge, I might have underestimated the need for that.
Let's go back. If that was May 2nd, June 1st is the first time I got any idea from someone at City Hall of what the problem really was. I'm not talking about 3:00 when it occurred, I'm talking about from May 2nd to June 1st, 30 days of no information. And people ask us questions.
I understand that.
And it's embarrassing to say, I don't know anything about it. I hadn't been informed.
Did we not do an article in the paper for the public to hear?
Well, all that was due the same day that the paper came out and a story on it.
I told you a long time ago, Jim, I want to come by seeing a regular basis. Oh, you don't have to worry about it, John. Just write me, text me, whatever. But I did not think.
If you had sent me a text.
I did not, I did not think that the wood bridge was causing that big of a scall since we hit the paper, the social media. And, but if you had that, all you had to do is call me, I promise you I'd give you the download. I didn't think about calling council members and telling them unless they wanted to call me, I would have been happy to talk.
I'd like to have a discussion of that and.
That's fine, I don't know how.
And work about it some sort of way. And I don't know what it is, I don't know the answer, but six of us.
But that's why we got the workshop, so I can get you totally briefed on everything we're going to discuss Monday night, so that I don't have to surprise you with big bill items that you didn't have a clue about before.
And it's wonderful we have.
So is it necessary to discuss that at the council meeting? We can't discuss it now?
We can discuss it now.
What we're talking about. Because I don't know how long you.
I don't mind.
If you can handle it. I agree that there ought to be more communication between what, for us, about what's going on in the city. It shouldn't be Facebook and it shouldn't be the newspaper. And I think it's can be, it could be very easily handled with just a group email, even though not everybody likes email, but it is a way where you can, let's check the box where you say that you've communicated with us about, here's a little heads up, the bridge is out.
We did this while, but it is quite consuming to go back and try to get all this ready and constantly.
I think that should be your responsibility.
I can have employees shoot those emails in a heartbeat.
Perfect.
But telling, but most of my employees, except for maybe Lonnie, wasn't privy to the call that we received and went and shut it down. But I don't mind, guys, it's just the time, your time, and a lot of times tonight, it was quite inconvenient for several people to be here tonight. And a lot of times, maybe our communication skills could improve by you calling me, and I would be happy to tell you what, if you see the wood bridge is down, I want the story. 706-692-8000, I got him, he'll tell me, I promise you he'll answer my phone. I like to speak to you face to face as much as I can as well.
I agree with that.
See, if it's a text, if it's an email, all of us are getting the same information. If I'm picking up the phone and calling you, then you want me to pick up the phone, call somebody and tell him?
No, you call me, I'd be really confused about it.
Yeah, by the time it gets passed around to the five of us, it's not the wooden bridge, it's something else.
I don't thank this council, and I also this council, I'll just speak for myself. I don't, and I've mentioned this in the past, that I don't need to know every little thing that's going on in the city, that's your job. I know where Jim's coming from because we are elected officials and you have people asking you about certain situations. And you have to sit there and say, well, I don't know. I don't need to know everything. But something like the wood bridge, a big bank, say, a big part of this community, you hate to be asked, it's not really, and I'm not put that way.
I'll give all y'all my apologies because I didn't think at that time to get you on board with it. It's my fault, I should have. Especially I didn't want to get blindsided with the monument being moved, which was instituted or instigated by our office. So what I'll do is I will come up with a plan starting tomorrow again, that I'm going to text you, email you, however you want to receive it. And I've got several employees that love to text and communicate more than I do. So I will have those information, hit your email. If David Hall, he has it, I don't mind that they send that to you, and I'd like to have some idea of what they're saying, especially coming from a water plant, what I might not know, because that would really hurt my feelings, Tony. I will do a better job at that, Jim.
And I think.
One more time, I'll do.
Tara would be a great person to do this. And I'm not sitting here trying to manage her.
No, but she gets my information for ideas more often than not, so she has to download me.
Are we hardwiring these meetings? I reached out to Tara because I realized once, once I got the reminder about the.
I was texting, I was texting to remember.
She looks me up for the mayor, but I wasn't trying to, I was just trying to find out, and I wasn't aware that we were definitely having these meetings.
Thursdays prior.
Okay.
We kind of verbally set that up, and I tried to remind you about Tuesday, but verbally, we can move it if somebody needs to, but this is plenty of time for us to get as close as we can to a council meeting.
Well, it gives us a week to prepare to discuss it.
Didn't realize it was going to be done every month without some sort of, okay, we're doing this this month, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, I like to see, you know, we set up committees, I would assign it, you know, sometimes you get the agenda and then if y'all want to go about y'all's rat killing, other couple committees, still talk around, have a chance to talk, although we're not up here three times a week.
Well, you know, we thought committees together before, but you guys all have day jobs except for one, and he's a pretty busy guy. So when I put you on that committee, it's up to you to form meet and come, if you want to get on the agenda, you say, Mayor, need to make a presentation, and I'd be happy to hear that, and the council will. So we can get much more committed, committee minded, but it, know this, that it takes work and research to get that done, and you got access.
Well, I know we're off here, so it's a good opportunity.
But it's really great to get the council involved. Like Tony says, sometimes I don't have the time to find out everything going on, but what I'll do is I will hit you with these emails or text messages.
Put this way, let us know if you're about to be on TV.
Or in the paper the next day.
I'm doing everything I can to stay out of it, but.
Email works best for me.
Me too.
Email.
Email my body. Text is the best way.
But I can give you a basic, a basic text message, you called me.
Tara, Tara's always been good about letting me know about stuff. You know, I remind her about this meeting.
But I should have thought the wood bridge was going to get you guys a lot of questions.
The biggest question I had, why are the gravel all over the doggone bridge?
Because it's closed. We weren't going to let anything, and they told us not to let anything cross on the bridge. And I'll tell you why it happened.
Well, everybody thinks it pushed out a flash and sand.
Let me explain why. I personally wouldn't have done it quite that way, but what's there is a lot of labor. I gave instructions. I went off and sent a crew up to do that, and they put the gravel a little too close to bridge. Because ultimately, when they start working on the bridge, they're going to have to move the gravel off. The sign is too close. And, but in order to get those crews and out of the park to go do that, while people were wanting to know why the park wasn't open, they did it that way without my attention. And so I would not have done it that way. But I, it was not going to be that much harm, and people walking across in wheelchairs and whatever, we went up and slid the gravel over and let people work their way through it. It don't need to be conveniently crossed because the bridge, it says closed on both sides. Not for walking, not to talk about walking. But it says closed, and we're going to do everything we can, if the council wishes, get it back online. And it's going, but it's going to take time.
We don't know what we need to do here.
We don't know what to tell you we got there.
Still the hands of the state. It took us five ton of ore.
How much was it before? It was 80,000.
85,000 the last time.
That was a no way.
We don't, we really ain't sound like somebody we know can't tell you anything, but I can't tell you anything about prices right now because we're getting basic rough estimates that if we get involved talking about that, we affect the bidding process. So I told Lonnie not, don't say anything about money because that's going to get us killed.
Well, you don't really know it, you don't know.
We just get people who don't really know enough information, but you remember when somebody said, how much is it going to cost me to repair? And I said, no strings attached, how much do things going to cost? And we can't give you those numbers, it'll be affecting whatever. If I get you outside, I might tell you as a buddy or whatever, but it's not anything publicly we can announce. But I think we can afford it, I'll say that. Until they hear me say that, and then they'll raise the price. But that's all I've got, guys, for the council, and I appreciate y'all doing it. Sorry, Doc, that you missed your event tonight and.
Free food and bread and all sorts.